Call to order to Superintendent's Information Committee Meeting on November 3rd, 2014. I always have to look at my blog. 7:06. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of our nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Since we will be voting tonight, we will start with the roll call.
Mr. Dissing.
Here.
Mr. Kachas.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Trucey.
Here.
Mr. Stovart.
Here.
Dr. Tre.
Here.
You have a form. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. Let's start with Special Report, IU Number 7. Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a short report for a meeting called 10/28/2014, which there was 14 and 17 District Representatives present. It was at Westmoreland County Intermediate Board Meeting. We had short workshops, short sessions that broke into committees and discussed committee-related subjects. My committee was a strategic plan committee. The executive session handled typical personnel issues, were discussed, typical financial business was conducted, approved the September 13 bill to be paid and ratified the investments. Accepted two resignations, one teacher and one supervisor of special ed, and approved a number of leaves in various absences. Approved a substitute list, and also approved advertising to replace the recently resigned position, the special education position. And there's also a report attached with some other minutia of the report, details that I don't have in my rubber report that's attached to your package. That is all, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Libraries and Legislative Council. Dr. Tre.
Thank you, Madam President. No specific report on the libraries at this time. But I will go to the legislative report, and I refer my colleagues to the written report I provided not long ago. It's got two pages, consolidated what went on at the PASA, at the PSBA conference from October 21st to the 24th. I only highlight the most important things. I will tell you that in the years I've attended this event, this is probably, it was the least frustrating compared to the past, but the key, I think we'll find out as I go through the report, why there was no frustration. And if I could just go over some of the items. First, of course, the theme of this session was stronger schools, stronger Pennsylvania. I go through a variety of sessions. When you choose things, you choose things that are valuable for the school district. And fortunately, I found out every time I've been there, we're so far ahead in so many ways because of the contributions within our school system, through administrators, our teachers, the direction of our parents and students. We really have touched on so many ideas, way ahead of everybody else. It's very comforting in a lot of ways. So it makes selection a little more difficult all in all, but we do come up with some good ideas and some good concepts along the line and pass on. And in referring to first thing, there's always a category at the PASA, PSBE, that deals with Pennsylvania politics. There's a gentleman who's a pollster, Dr. Terry Nadata, who normally always presents. He was not a part of the program this year. I do must admit, though, we did get some feedback from another source, that he said the voting, one data did come out, that was, we anticipate a voter input of about 40 to almost 50 percent this year, the election coming up next week. Next thing was attending educational sessions. I saw one on passing a facility referendum, which is something we had contemplated at one stage or another, and it's something we may have, because of the difficulty in acquiring financing, the collapse of our PlanCon program in the state, many ways to draw funds, and unfortunately, referendum may be part of it. State College, I did not know who the school was at the time, but State College did get a 74 percent voter approval on an $85 million bond, and related to improvement. But then, as I looked in the demographics, State College is a highly proactive, heavy educational community, nothing compared to what most of us deal out here with. 20 percent of our parents or our taxpayers in district having kids in the school, and the other 80 percent do not. So it was not a good comparison to try to draw data from, although they did have a very documented, regimented process that you have to go through than if we ever had to go through it, to acquire such support. There was another thing called the Active Shooter Drill, and we're very progressive here also. We had a demonstration recently in the early stages. We looked at one, I looked at one for Central York High School, they did it last year, and they did it on Act 80 Day. That's the one where they had over 500 faculty members and staff members, 1,700 students, and 70 law enforcement officials from the local, state, and federal government level, and they did a great program overall. And they had a lot of feedback, it was very useful, long-term, so that any school district do that. Their plan is to do it building by building. They did it at the high school first. They're going to do it every couple of years, and they're refining the process. Good ideas and lessons learned. It's a good contact for us. The next thing was turning expulsions into a win-win. We have a very solid program, a very solid policy, we handle that very well. I went to the school system there, and in their presentation, we talked about another opportunity in expulsion that may involve a highly monitored, accountable, focused, council-supported improvement plan, which could mean, in some cases, if it worked effectively, a student who wasn't on expulsion could earn their way back from an early expulsion. Something to look at. It was different, it had possibilities. Again, the heavy monitoring made it worthwhile. Westmoreland, Pennsylvania, Summer STEM Academy, Fox Chapel runs it. I understand we had a few students from Pet Trafford go there, I guess after the football game. I don't know if we'll get any more. Pet Trafford students have bitted there, but in any case, Fox Chapel runs a very, very strong program, and over the summer, they're incorporating it. They have tremendous contacts in the business and medical fields, and the professionals in higher education. And they're looking for partners. They're looking to expand their concept and idea to other campuses, and we're certainly in the same level of skill and capability, it's another idea. Leaving the educational sessions and going on into legislative update, something that every year was not presented. Nothing. PSB efforts now, our philosophy in PSBA, and with past, has changed from constant meetings and sessions to more of a constant program of lobbying. They have a massive team of lobbyists, they're constantly in Harrisburg, and they're relying on the efforts of the local school districts to lobby our own legislators. There's a constant push there, we get it all the time, to get out there and make ourselves known to our legislators and communicate. That's all well and good for us out in Western PA. We do that. We've all interacted very well, we have a very supportive group of legislators, they try to work with us, even though they have differences, they try to compromise to get things done. We should be proud of our cross-mixture of political parties and what we do here in Western PA. However, the frustration continues in the fact that we're in the wrong part of the state. Our legislators know that the East controls things, and consequently, it's extremely difficult to acquire or get anything done with advocacy. So in essence, we have to direct our efforts to the East as much as possible, and that seems to be where things are going at this stage. The concentration is to try to get the eastern part of the state to give up, give in, share. The next thing was PDE updates. There was nobody there from the Department of Education. Nobody. There were no legislators, there were no PDE. I mean, that's why I wasn't frustrated, because when they're there, they tell us we've done nothing. But there was no presentation at all from PDA, PDE. The next area was on the Excellence Fairs. I normally do that. These are 40 booths representing different school systems. Now, all this information I passed on to Dr. Harris a few days back, and he passes it on as he sees it valuable and appropriate to various members of our school, staff, students, teachers, principals, business manager, community, PTOs, wherever it may be appropriate. Again, with no mandate to do any of that, obviously, not an authority to dominate or dictate that, but ideas that might be useful. One of the areas was, as you can see, there were several classes that were dealt with, and there was one on internet safety offered in the middle school, with protocols and digital footprints and cyberbullying and so on. There was also an E-Team, and it talked about free monthly community technology outreach to senior citizens. High school students taught seniors how to work in the community and do things. There was also Flat Stanley. We do use Flat Stanley in our school district, which is basically a program to communicate with students from other countries and other states, and share experiences across curriculum. It was a good plan for that. Genetics of Cancer, we saw a school program that collaborates with medical schools and other medical facilities to do a variety of experimentation on heredity, cancer orientation, actually cadavers. They actually operated on cadavers in some medical institutions, all coming in and out of high schools. I saw a leadership program, which is interesting with fifth graders, but we have good programs in our own district, but they took it a step further and do things in the community, and much of it dealing with senior citizens. I saw a games design program that was done very well, that blends math, physics programming, graphic design, and it crosses the curriculum. Well managed. I saw robotics. It was very interesting to see a robot presented that was put on a table when it was going through crunches, was leading a physical education class. It's only about four foot high, it was very visible, did a good, excellent exercise, I thought there were better crunches than I've ever done in my life, but it was a very, very good program, but also is used with autistic students and special needs. It's a whole new brand of education, and again, it's incorporated in their physical education program. The next level, number four, talked about contests dealing with PSBA, posters, essay, video contests. 500 students submitted from around the state. It was heavily more screened, high quality. What was interesting about it, which was, there were actually 20 videos in it, and the 20 videos talked about ways in which public education changed their lives. This is from 20 students across the state, and they showed them through the entire conference, and they were very touching, very touching, particularly when you brought in some minority students coming from a very difficult capacity or origin in life. It reached me and a lot of others at the same thing. Very professionally done also. And the PSB platform issues, we always used to spend a lot of time going over that. We modified our approach, it's much more philosophical, and not as extremely defined, although again, we had four or five priorities we went through last month. There was no significant controversy. There hasn't been in the last few years. Exhibits, I went to some exhibits, there were many there. The only ones I concentrated on were school safety, the hotline program they offer, there was another one called Align, which deals with, oh, excuse me, Impax and ASERT, which deals with automatic critical incident response for teachers, which is a philosophy we kind of do here related to safety. If we have another, if there would be a terrible event, an assault on our schools, we've been working with our teachers and staff to be more responsive, to give us time, so they automatically respond. Well, this Impax and ASERT was a philosophy that goes in exactly that same direction. It's very functional, it's very practical, and it will save lives. And also, the last thing I saw was Safe School, excuse me, a program called Align, and that dealt with how you could take existing bus transportation, and you move it around, and what your attempt would be is to come up with a better schedule, all in all, more refined, more appropriate, et cetera. And that was about it. It was a good program, all in all, not frustrating. Of course, again, there was nothing to frustrate me about, so. And if anybody has any specific questions, share it with Dr. Harris, and he also has the program there, too. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Tre. Career Tech, Mr. Trucey.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I go into Career Tech, I just want to raise that Trafford, unfortunately, we had a bomb threat last week, as we all know, and I'd like to thank a few people, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Napoli, Chief Disso from Trafford Police Force, and he was immediately responded, and Chief Otto came up from Penn Township. All the teachers, secretaries, custodians, for the quick and safe evacuation, central administration for taking, busting the kids up here. Everything went very smoothly. The parent reaction was very cooperative, very understanding, and I just wanted to make a little special note of that, and thank everybody for their cooperation. And fortunately, then after, we had ours in Gateway High School, I dare say, the week before that, Frank and Rachel I dare, so it's a lot of copycat going on, but I hope we catch somebody, one in the district catches somebody, some example.
Yeah, in a two-week period, Franklin, Norman, Penn Trafford, and Gateway, all go ahead.
Norman, I didn't know about Norman. Okay. Okay, in our meeting, which was October 15th, just a few facts here, that approximately, our night school, we have 400 students, Monday through Thursday at our night school. Our graduation rate, which I thought was, our graduates, 90 to 94 percent of our graduates, this is how employment is working out so well for the Bo-Tech kids, either they're working in their fields, or doing postgraduate work in their fields, or they're in the military. And our bid for the cosmetology, which we had to bring up to date because of ventilation purposes, Trudy McCann's got it over Josh Control, they got $127,000, and they're supposed to start work this week, I believe, and the project should be completed by the end of January. There will be no November meeting because of the Thanksgiving holiday. We had to push it back a week, but the Wednesday before, a lot of people said they could make it through, so we paid all November bills in October meeting. And our next meeting will be in December, the 17th, and everybody's invited to the Christmas buffet. Everybody that does go is very, very enjoyable. Election officers, Mr. Carl Spooty was nominated for president, Mr. Bill Brasko was nominated for vice president. And the goodies, just so we know, very good goodies this time. We had tacos, salad bar, red peppers, cheese, olives, cucumbers, tomatoes, onions, carrots, eggs, ranch and Italian dressing. We had mini tuna and chicken salad sandwiches, knickerdoodle cookies, ladyloks, butter squash pecan cookies, and multiberry pies. That's all I have, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trucey. Rec boards, Penn Township.
While I'm in the meeting of October 23rd? Sort of a little bit of a summary from the Cheryl days in terms of what accomplishments had occurred, and sort of a transition to win the virus, but we did get approval for the Phase 2 expansion to the municipal park, which will include renovations of the existing playground, new basketball, tennis, and sand volleyball courts. So the DCNR money that came in was approximately $211,000. So there's some matching funds that we have to, with in-kind work and such that we have to do as well. But with some discussion about during her tenure that they brought in, it was, what, 1.4 million, Phil, in improvements to our playgrounds around the community through the efforts of Cheryl's grant, right? So basically, we were from a rec board giving her hats off for her work in terms of those funds that were raised. We did hand out some checks to some local senior citizen groups for some of their activities that they do throughout the year, and did some preliminary discussions with regards to the baseball and SOF organizations for their tournament schedule for next year. That pretty much covers it.
I just want to add a little bit to this to the board, I understand that the money that is donated from the school district to the rec board, in addition to money this received in the township, we are able to support four local senior citizen groups. I would go out on a limb and say that without the money that the board donated, I don't think these organizations would exist. Two of the four groups were represented, people came there, were very appreciative of the money that we donated. I just want to let the board know that we are supporting in a way, from areas and functions and people in this district through various monies that go out through rec board or PTARP or whatever. I just want to let people know that.
That's a good point, Phil. Actually, one of the groups had 208 members and the other group had 60.
Who charties?
They were Young and Hard Group and Super Seniors. They have different activities that they coordinate.
Here's local bringing senior citizens, PT senior citizens, super seniors, and Young and Hard.
We don't give them much, but we give them enough that they basically organize some of their activities.
It's a lot to them.
Right. Without it, they wouldn't pay, I don't think they would.
I don't think they would either.
That's very true. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 20th. That's all I have, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Koschko, and Mr. Kachas. Trafford Borough, Mr. Trucey.
Thank you, Madam President. The Halloween Parade was on the 26th, 93 kids in the parade, and they said the magician was excellent. At the American Legion, the party of the American Legion, and gifts for everybody, and I just hate to say this, but we had some senior citizens who'd had no grandkids ever, they couldn't help themselves with some pizza, and, oh, well, that's colorful. You talk to them and say, you know, you have to have some grandkids with you, or some neighbor kids, or somebody kids, so you can eat something, you know. And the guy's like, next thing you know, he says, can I take one of my wife? It's like I wasn't even talking to him. He just wanted, he wanted to feed his wife, and I said, okay, no. Okay, next, and the Halloween trick-or-treat was again Friday, a little bit wet, but there was a pretty nice turnout. It was, even around it, it was a nice turnout. The auction's the 28th of February, great checks, still working on the parking meters for it, and it looks like that's coming along real well. Our fund balance is $29,000. We got the checks, thank Mr. Lego for the check, and thank you to Carol, I believe, too, was very helpful, yes. Thanks also for the check that they sent, very helpful, just like Mr. Kachas and Dr. Koschko just said, that little bit of money goes a long way, helps out a lot of different people. The BY Park, I want to thank Penn Township for taking all our geese, very nice some, and we do not want them back, and we're winterizing the park now, it's retained care by next time we meet, and our next meeting is going to be November 24th. That's all I have, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trucey. All right, Mr. Leonard, what are we doing with those geese? Who are we giving them?
I was going to make a comment, just as I was coming over, just before this meeting, I saw a whole flock of them taking off from our area and headed to the traffic. No, they're not going west, David. We don't want them west.
Who's sending these?
We don't want them either. You gotta stop the airplane. Maybe you eat.
They are annoying when you're trying to walk up there.
Oh, man, what they leave behind.
They are annoying, very annoying, in other ways.
All right. Penn Borough.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to link up till Friday, but I'll ask them if they want the geese.
Okay. Please do.
And, but at that time, I'll send a small written report for the membership board next Monday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Tre. I'm up next with PTARP. We had our meeting this afternoon. The current fund balance is $65,000. Last year at this time, it was $64,000, so it's about the same, a little bit ahead. PTARP building, as you all know, you probably know, read the paper, that we're looking to, PTARP board, that is, is looking to transfer the deed back to the township, and we found, we learned further evidence today of why that is so important. The PTARP building, even though the rentals are up, had an income of $9,800 this year, and if you don't count the payments to the parking lot, which is $522 a month, if you don't count that, our expenses were $19,100, approximately $8,300 in the whole operating this year, with our rentals at an all-time high. So the expenses just keep going up year after year, utilities are increasing drastically, maintenance, we had elevator, we had plumbing problems, we had furnace problems, there's just been one problem after another.
It was a good decision to make.
Yes, it was a very good decision. A little update on it, local fire department has expressed interest in the PTARP building, and they are working with Penn Township. We voted today to transfer the building back to Penn Township, it will take effect at the end of the year. At that time, Penn Township, if they choose to accept it, will accept the responsibility for the parking lot loan and the building. And then, we will be working out, they will be working out details with the fire department. However, if Penn Township decides that they do not want it, it comes back to the school district, and at that time, we would most likely put it up for sale. Fall registration is approximately the same as it was last year, a little over 500. Two upcoming events that I want to mention, the father-daughter dance is on December 5th, and the John Otto roast is this Friday on November 7th. If you have any interest in either of these events, you can see me after this meeting. They had their annual wine tasting in October, and they made approximately $1,200. That's all I have on PTARP. Dr. Harris?
And Tammy, with PTARP and the roast of John Otto, I know a lot of teachers and staff would have liked to have gone.
Right.
But we have a conflict because, as you know, we, the football team continues to make the playoffs, you know, or.
It's darn, no.
It's a great problem to have, so a lot of us would like to do both, which is hard to do.
Yeah. I was going to announce this at the end of the meeting, but the football team will be playing this Friday at Fox Chapel, I believe, against North Allegheny?
Yes.
Yes. So, hope to see a lot of you there. We will be there. Okay, Dr. Harris, the Community Education Foundation.
This past week, Amy Kelly has been very busy auditioning acts for the second annual PT Got Talent Show. Last year, it was a success, and actually, Phil was one of the ones who spearheaded the idea, and it really turned out great. But, so we're going to do a second show and hopefully make some extra cash for the grants we'd like to write for teachers. But three nights last week, she actually held additions, and she had several teams of teacher judges helping her, where they got it down to the 15 best acts that they are going to be doing, PT Got Talent in January, and we're starting looking for advertising, advertisements that are coming out. But I do appreciate all our time and effort to put into that, because it's going to make it for our success. And tomorrow, sometime during the day, and maybe Brett's going to have to be there, Waste Management is coming to present our president, Susan Jennings, with a check. Unfortunately, my, I don't know what the amount was, but I emailed him back, I said, what is the amount? I never got that back. We are receiving a check from Waste Management for our foundation, so that should be exciting tomorrow. Any foundation news, Phil?
Nothing to add.
That's all we have for the foundation?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Harris. We will not be meeting for executive session at this point. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and student matters, and to receive information on miscellaneous matters. Okay, moving on to the information part of our meeting, Dr. Harris.
Hey, thank you. I know Dick already mentioned this, but I was going to piggyback on what he said. I feel that the bomb threat, I think everything went very smooth, and I truly appreciate Captain Disso and his men for all that they did. I also appreciate Penn Township for coming, or Chief Otto for coming down and offering their assistance as well. It's always great to have extra support from our police officers and rescue teams. More than two-thirds of the students were picked up by their parents, and all the parents who picked up the children seemed to be very supportive. We got a lot of thank you emails. I appreciate the fact that Summer Daniels and Nicole Valentej, I think is how you say your new name, she was Popovich, actually, we've had a good reunification plan in place. I appreciate the teachers and the actions of the support staff as they handled the emergency. Everyone followed the plan, and I think everyone rose to occasion, so hopefully, we don't have another one, but we do know what we're doing, so we appreciate that. In-service day, just in case anyone forgets, school is closed tomorrow for the students. There is a teacher day, as is parent-teacher conference for the elementary school. The middle school and high school teachers were receiving training on On-Hand School, which is purchased this year by the school board approved it. This system provides teachers with an opportunity on how to increase student achievement and provide growth by analyzing data and identifying strengths and weaknesses of individual children. The teachers have been doing this last few years on their own, so this system will actually strengthen what they do, strengthen the process, and save some time. The afternoon will be spent by department focusing on the board's goals of STEAM, customized learning, TOK, and PLN. And finally, and Scott's going to present, our construction management team?
We have Hank from ACTAS Architecture and Nate from Masara, who are going to give us an update on the construction project. Before they begin, I do want to make a brief announcement that the library, as we have told you in the past, that it was scheduled to be completed in February, we have changed that. The construction, Lowmore has asked us to, if we would be able to move that back so that they could address some of the plumbing issues that are right above the library, the whole science area is above the library, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that ceiling to address the plumbing and gas lines that are there, and we prefer to do that now while the library is basically in disarray, while we don't have the carpet, there's not new furniture and all that, so the plan is to go ahead and proceed with that work in the ceiling in the library over the next four or five months, and we would like to open the library, well, we will open the library in August, and it will be brand-new, and everything will be done, that way we won't have to worry about the carpet, the furniture, or anything else getting ruined in the spring, so just want to keep everybody up to date with that. We also have Nate and Hank to give us an update on the project and what's been happening. Hank's going to address, I'm sure there's a lot of people who have, maybe have some questions about the road outside and the new bus loop. We did open that up today. The students were dismissed today, the buses were in the bus loop. It worked today, but there are some issues that we have to resolve in terms of safety and making sure the kids are getting out there, and some of the traffic patterns and things like that. The bus loop, I'm sorry, the parent drop-off loop that is coming in the spring and summer of this year will help with that process, but we have to do. of this year will help with that process, but we have to do some logistics on making sure that the kids are getting out to the buses in a safe manner, so we'll be working on that. But the bus loop was in operation today, we'll be shutting off the back of the building in the next week or two. When that happens, we'll start the construction on the annex, so we'll start digging footers and foundations probably within the next couple of weeks, and hopefully, that annex will be, you know, done within, I think, a year or so, or supposed to be done in the latter half of next year, so.
Yeah, a lot of it's really well, they're dependent, if we have a really good winter, we get a lot done very quickly, yeah.
So that's the update, but Hank is gonna address, I don't know how you guys are gonna do, but Hank does want to address the road. If you have been outside, you saw the road that is outside, that kind of has the humps and bumps in there, and I'm sure this question is the why that, that is, so Hank's gonna address that, and trying to give you a little bit of an explanation of why that was designed that way, and what happened there, but I guess Nate, I'll let you go first.
Yeah, I'll just give a project schedule update. Things have been going very well, if you've kind of walked around the building and seen we've made a lot of progress in the past month. All the prime contractors we've had, like we've said from the very beginning, have been very good and worked very well together. I'll address a little bit of the library, why we decided to do that, and one of the ways that actually came out is, if you didn't know, all our foremen, superintendent, people actually running the crews, not the people like me that sit in the office, but the actual people out here doing the work, all the leaders meet on Mondays afternoons in our construction trailer with our site manager, Trish, and they go over their scope of work for the week, and then they look a little bit ahead to see what's coming up, and that's how they kind of came out with the library issue and what we could do to address that and make that a little bit better. So if you were to walk into our construction trailer, you'd actually see a whiteboard on the wall, and each contractor has written out what they're doing for the week on each specific day. It allows them to see, are they working on top of each other, hey, I need you over here to do this on this day, because it's gonna be ready for you, and that's proven to, so far, to help us with coordination a lot. What Scott touched on, the library, the issue with the library is the science rooms are all above it. We are doing core drilling on second shift as we can. Core drilling's really the issue, because you get all new piping going to all the new lab casework that you have up there. We can only do so much without taking the rooms out of service, we have to wait for the summer, and if you've ever been around core drilling, when you drill down, it makes that concrete slurry mess that's really hard to control. So we're proceeding with the library, with the skylight going in at the end of this year, everything like normal, but then we'll stop and wait till the summer to do the carpet, the ceiling tile, and then put the final casework in. That way, at the end, you don't get half a library, you get a complete library that's done, perfect, you know, and ready to go for everybody, so. We appreciate the school district working with us, because it's gonna give you a much better product in the year. Site work, as Scott said, the bus loop's done, they did do the striping today, so the striping of all the parking spaces has been done. Right now, what their plan is towards the end of this week, shut down the bus, shut down the loop that goes around the building, we will give you when we have the exact date on that. The reason they're waiting is they actually have it dug up by the tennis courts to put in the new storm retention tank, so they figure there's no sense shutting down the road for a day or two, and we could just leave it open until they finish that work. And they're also still trying to work real hard to get that, the overflow parking at the auditorium done as well, they're still trying to confirm if we get the paver back here to do that. The paver to do while they were here, we were waiting on a storm structure that came this week that they're putting in, they'll be ready, it's just a matter of if the weather holds out, we'll get the paver back here, because we'd really like to turn that over, too. The music area, that'll be turned over within about the next two weeks. A lot of the material that I've been talking about's starting to come in now, carpet actually starting to come in this week, so once we get the carpet in the band room, all the new lights and everything have been put in there, we'll be able to turn that area back over to you. The casework for the band room comes a little bit later, but it comes at the end of November, so not much later. All the music casework will be in. Administrative area, carpet's coming in mid this week, they'll start working around the building. The casework comes in at the end of this month, so within the next two weeks, once we get the carpet in, we'll be able to move the principals out of the back office, then attack the back office, and slowly start moving the staff back in there as that finishes up. The new English area will be complete, right now, they're looking at November 17th, which is a lot earlier than the original date of January 1st, so that area, they would move up quite a bit, and then hopefully allow us to take the math theories earlier. What you'll see, I'll be sending Scott within the next week, that phasing schedule that you all saw, construction time, we've updated that for some of the things we're doing, you'll see some of the stuff started to push up a little bit, so it's going in the right direction. The nurses area, that's an area that we started earlier than the original phasing schedule, there's your demolition on that, they're gonna try to get that around the first of the year, be able to turn over the new nurses area, and move that nurse over to there. And miscellaneous work, you can see, we're waiting on some material that comes, and filler work, they started doing the retaining wall over by the new playground area at the new daycare. They've also done some of the concrete work for the annex down there in the maintenance area, where you see actually inside the building with footings and concrete walls, the stuff that they could, and then as soon as they shut down the loop out here, they'll start work on the foundation of the annex. If you look right now, all the rebar and everything's here are ready to go, so they'll start digging and placing it. And a lot of our finished date on that will depend on how the weather is, if we have a good mild winter, like hopefully we'll have, compared to last year, then we can get a lot of mess. Any questions on the schedule? Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott wanted me to talk a little bit about the bus loop. As Nate said, the bus loop is now completed and opened for use, there is still, the guiderail has to be installed, and that's coming, when, later this week or next week?
It's in the next two weeks, within the next.
So there's a guiderail that goes along the low side of that, so right now, the bus loop is in operation, but it's not complete until the guiderail gets installed. In building the road, we were required to hold and capture all of our storm water on that, on that road, and release it at a slower rate than what it was prior to our work, it's a ordinance that we, that we're required to meet, and in doing that, we have to put catch basins in the road and kind of create a, we're not allowing the water to run off into the ground, into the ground on the sides like most of the roads around here will do, so we have to capture it and hold it in place. And in order to get, we put catch basins in to do that, and in order to get the water to travel to those catch basins, the road has to, has to slope towards the catch basins. That road's roughly 500 feet long, it meets an existing elevation on each end of the road that is basically level, so we have this level road that we have to get the water to move from left to right on, and the way to get it to move from left to right on is to do those undulations, so that's why they're there. Those undulations are at the minimum level the contractor was comfortable paving to, to ensure that there would not be ponding on the road. So that's, that's the reason for the look of that road.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, gentlemen.
At this time, we will have recognition of visitors. Following rules are in effect, you must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant. I have one resident who has signed up to address the board, and Bill, you want to come forward?
Absolutely. Good morning, Tom Corbain, Harrison City. I noticed that on Section 8, we're gonna be voting on a contract, I would move that the board table this due to the fact that the public has neither seen the terms nor the details of what you're going to be voting on this for.
Yeah, well, there's no, a motion made from the audience, so.
Last time, we had pass the bill and then see what's in the bill, that didn't work out very good for us either, so we'd like to, I believe it, does the Pennsylvania State have something to say? Georgia, help me out on this one. Where we're supposed, we're supposed to be able to see or comment on the?
No, there's no, there's no regulation in the school code that the proposed contract be published or posted prior to the board school director's vote.
So we're gonna get what we get then. Okay.
Thank, thank you, Bill. All right, continuing with the meeting, athletics and extrapertural.
All right, next week, we're gonna ask you to accept further donations and employee personnel. Under a budget and finance, we're gonna ask you to approve expenditures for the high school renovation project, approve additional credit reimbursements. We won't have anything for buildings grounds and safety at this time, and now we're gonna go to an action item. Do we have to ask you to do this?
Okay, Mr. Nemec. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, why we're all here tonight.
Yes.
I would like to move to approve a four-year contract with the Penn Trafford Education Association, effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2018. A copy of the agreement will become a part of the official board minutes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Questions?
Should that be 2017? Am I wrong or not?
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Question, second by Mr. Petrusi, question being called for here? Okay, question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor, the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no?
Aye, no.
Call the board.
Mr. Kachasik?
Yes.
Dr. Koschko?
So.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Mill?
No.
Mr. Nemec?
Yes.
Mr. Petrusi?
Yes.
Mr. Stovart?
No.
Dr. Trey?
Yes.
Mrs. Issing?
Yes.
Six yes, three no, the motion passes.
That's all I have, Madam President.
All right, next week, under food service, we won't have anything to report. Personnel and curricula, we're gonna ask you to approve substitute teachers and support personnel, approve leave requests, approve conference requests, approve an addendum to the superintendent and assistant superintendent contract. Under policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, Accept and File Information Committee Meeting Minutes of October 6, 2014, appoint CWCTC Joint Operating Committee Representative, file approval of board policies and administrative regulations. Under taxes and census, insurance and census, we won't have anything to report.
All right, at this time, does anybody have any comments, questions? Any further items? At this time, this meeting is adjourned.